Yeah, I was thinking we might do this at Granicus, right? Audio streamers.
Live to the world.
Morning, Harold. How are you? Good to see you, man. Are you here for something you're thinking of?
This is my Martin, the garment district suit.
I left you a present.
Sixty-eight bucks for this. Sixty-eight bucks? This is the third time I've worn it. I figure if I get ten wears out of it. Oh, did you go in the alley? Did you go down the alley?
Where's your...
Next time you go.
Where's Mr.?
There's an alley back side. Next week there's an alley. And the alley is the best place to shop. I mean, they have stuff.
It's like an athlete. But they work up the backsides of the buildings. So most of the buildings are cut.
The colder the better in here, I don't like it. Too warm.
Absolutely. I agree.
Phil.
Yeah, I got that email yesterday that all I had to do was...
Morning, Mr. Maples.
Mr. President.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled board supervisors' meeting. If you would please stand and join me in a flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we get underway this morning, I'd just like to announce that we are utilizing a new system this morning. It's provided by Granicus, and it's an audio streaming system. In the past, we've had audio streaming within the county offices. As of today, we have audio streaming via the web to the world. So that's a change, and I know our clerk is a little bit apprehensive. It's a new system, and I've told her, I'm telling her now, if there's any problems, you know, it's okay to call timeout, and we'll take care of whatever problems we have to do. But this system promises to be very effective, not only from a communication standpoint, but I know one of the things our staff is quite excited about will be the retrieval possibilities, the ability to retrieve information. It'll be archived, and it will save tremendous time and effort. Anyone will be able to retrieve information again via the web. So bear with us this morning as we try a new system. This time, we'd like to hear from Charlotte, from Alcaldy and Fay. Fay, Charlotte, I would... Hearn, sir? Hearn, sir. You know, you don't have vowels in there, and somehow it seems a little bit difficult. But Charlotte's been with Alcaldy and Fay for over three years, and she's been... Alcaldy and Fay has been Tulare County's federal lobbyist for the past ten years. Before joining the firm, Charlotte worked on Capitol Hill and was head of congressional affairs for several executive branch agencies. Her areas especially include transportation and Indian gaming. He's a native Californian, originally from Southern California. Charlotte, welcome this morning. It's nice to have you. I know you were working yesterday with our staff, and it's good to have you here.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to see you all again. I'm going to give you an update on the status of appropriations in Washington, D.C., and talk to you a little bit about what I have been doing here in Tulare County over the last day and a half. To begin with, on the status of appropriations, as most of you may know, the Congress did pass both the Defense Bill and the Department of Homeland Security Bill before they adjourned for the election. This is important for us to analyze because initially, the House and the Senate had intended to reduce the amount of money that was going to go to the Defense Department and utilize those funds to fund different projects and accounts in the balance of the federal budget. The Congress did decide to follow the President's lead and fully fund the Defense Department and the Department of Homeland Security. And the impact for us is that there will be some kind of adjustment made to the accounts that have already passed the House and been marked up in the Senate. There has been some discussion and speculation that this will mean an across-the-board cut of various accounts, and this is an issue that we will need to watch very carefully and work with our delegation on as Congress resolves the 2007 funding issues. Onto the balance of the funding, which, of course, is where our funding comes and our special projects will be funded. Congress, when they return, which will be after the election on November 9th, will have to resolve all of the funding issues for fiscal 2007. Initially, most of us had thought that they would try and pass the bills individually so that they could conference about them and work out all of the differences. It now looks like they will be rolling everything into an omnibus bill, and the question before all of us is when they will pass that omnibus bill. Traditionally, they try to pass it after a lame-duck session in November and December, but there has been tremendous speculation in the last couple of days that they may decide not to pass it and to allow the new Congress, which comes into session on January 3rd, to pass it sometime in January or February. If they do take that option, they will pass a short-term continuing resolution to fund the federal government through sometime in January or February. We will be watching that very carefully on your behalf. The change from doing a conference on an individual bill to an omnibus means that there will be less conversations between the House and the Senate individual appropriators, so we will need to be watching that very carefully on your behalf as well. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the county's individual projects. We were very pleased that the Senate did place funding, $300,000, for the eradication of marijuana plants on public lands in the Forest Service law enforcement account. And I know that you have met with Congressman Nunes, both here in the district and with his staff back in Washington. I know that Supervisor Ashida and CIO Haddix have recently been back in Washington, meeting with the appropriation staff and the agency staff on this issue. But we will want to continue our work with Congressman Nunes to ensure that this funding does stay in during the omnibus. In addition, we've got a soft earmark in the Commerce, Justice, State appropriation in the House for the Action Project. Traditional... Oh, a soft earmark is when the project is listed under the account in the report with no dollars attached to it. This is, this, by the way, is the traditional way that this account is handled, and the funds are always added during conference. So we will, again, want to continue our work with Mr. Nunes and work very closely with Senators Boxer and Feinstein to make sure that we do get a continuing funding stream for the Action Project, which is something that the county has worked on for a number of years and been successful in getting funding for. Now, to the purpose of my visit, I've been meeting with your staff and the department heads of a number of your departments to talk about funding for 2008. The process begins again with the new Congress on January 3rd, and we will need to be submitting our requests for individual projects and also to be aware of issues that come up in the... Sorry. Issues. Issues that come up...
The rules don't hearing you well in that, Charlotte, but now they are.
Issues that come up in the budget process. In my conversations with your staff, I have suggested that they do a review of their budgets for all sources of federal funding, including those funds that flow to the county through the state. My reason is, we continue to be in an era when we have deficits at the federal level and constricted budgets. In those time periods, traditionally, what Congress does and what the administrations do is they look to certain accounts, which they will reduce the funding for in order to be able to fund other, in their terms, more important items. We have, on your behalf, worked on the funding of such programs as payments in lieu of taxes in the past and other accounts, and I think it behooves all of us to look very carefully at the baseline funding that we depend upon so that when the administration's budget is released and when the budget process goes forward at the budget committees and at appropriations, we can, on your behalf, go to the delegation and talk to them about the fact that we really need full funding for these programs. This, of course, would be in addition to any projects that the county wants us to move forward on. But we've had that conversation with your... I've had that conversation... I shouldn't speak in the royal way. I've had that conversation with your staff, and we will be... I will be, and we, at Alcaldy and Fay, will be working with them in the next few months on the legislative platform, on projects, so that we can get everything filed in a timely manner with our delegation. And I have already had conversations with Mr. Nunes's staff regarding this, about how the process may or may not change. At this particular point in time, he, his staff believes they will continue to use the same forms that they have used in the past and follow a similar format. So we will move forward on that, with that, on your behalf. In closing, I'd like to talk a little bit about your delegation and what they've been doing, not only for you, but on a broader basis. Mr. Nunes, obviously, has been very helpful to you and to the county on the projects that we have pushed forward with you. In addition, as we all know, he's been very active on trying to get Highway 99 designated as an interstate highway. Another big project for him this year, which he did, if I'm not mistaken, on behalf of the leadership, is work on, I want to make sure I get this right, the American Made Energy Freedom Act, which would open ANWR and allocate the federal resources from that to the renewable and alternative energy for the country. So these are the issues that he was doing on behalf, not only of the county, but of the nation. Our senators have been very helpful to us during this year. Obviously, Senator Feinstein has been very helpful to us in her position on appropriations in helping us with the funding from the Forest Service. And she will continue in her seniority in the Senate, no matter what happens. Senator Boxer will be moving into a higher leadership position, no matter what happens with the Senate. She will become the ranking member of Environment and Public Works, or possibly the chairman. This is very important to us in the out-years because it is the Environment and Public Works Committee, which has responsibility for the reauthorization of safety lieu. And I'm sure going, "Didn't we just do that last year?" And the answer to that is yes, but it's up for reauthorization in 2009. And, of course, I am here today to work with your staff on fiscal 2008, and I can tell you that the administration and the Congress have already been looking at safety lieu. They've held hearings to find out, you know, have those policies been working? And they're beginning to look at programs, projects, and policies for 2009. So I think we should be doing something similar, and having Senator Boxer in that leadership position is going to be invaluable to us in 2009. In closing, I'd like to say that I am very pleased to be here talking with you, that our firm, Alcaldy and Fay, is very pleased to be continuing in our relationship with you. We look forward to continuing to serve you in Washington and to work for this administration and the residents of the county. And if you've got any questions?
Thank you, Charlotte. Are there any questions of members? Charlotte, I want to thank you for being here and appreciate, I know, in our trips back to Washington, you've always been very helpful to us in scheduling the things and getting us where we need to be on time, and very knowledgeable on various topics. So thank you very, very much. And are you finished with us now, or are you going to be meeting with staff today also?
No, I won't be meeting with staff. I will be working in the upcoming weeks on consolidating all the information that I gathered, and then we will be preparing materials, which your staff did an excellent job, by the way. Brian Haddix, Kristen Kirsten Bennett, and Jeff Forbes have been very helpful. And then we will be getting additional materials to you for the future.
Good. Thank you very much, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Have a safe journey. This time, just something that's not on our agenda, but our CIO would like to introduce some of his new staff people and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd also like to say thank you to Charlotte. She did a wonderful job yesterday, very patient, sitting there for eight, nine hours, listening to the department heads' concerns, giving pointers along the way. In a dynamic environment in Washington, it's good to have somebody kind of lead us through the morass. But onto the topic you had raised, Chairman, and your board, I'd like to introduce the two newest analysts of the CIO's office. We have Dana Wild, who's standing up here, and Julie Webb, to Dana's right. Dana comes to us from the private sector, and what intrigued me about Dana is she has the same background as Lynn Gregory, which is a master's in management and organizational behavior. How does, how do people interact with each other? What makes organizations function properly, correct structure? So very intriguing, but most recently Dana had been the operations manager, among other functions, with Farmers Insurance, and has a good handle on planning, coordinating, implementing programs, things of that nature. And if people get out of line, she was also a substitute teacher, so she had to bring folks back in. Always good to have that. As a son of a teacher, I know how that works. And then Julie, wonderful, wonderful asset, who has come over from HHSA. I love to look at John with the tears in his eyes now to understand the true value of Julie. Julie was John's administrative specialist, and before that, functioned the area of fiscal and various roles. What's impressive about Julie is how quickly she moved up through the ranks, and then how quickly she moved from the ranks over to here. So, and Julie's... Excuse me?
That was terrible.
You know? You just can't get out of that shark skittering after a while. But I'm very pleased with the caliber of candidates who applied for the jobs and the fact that these two accepted the position. It'll do well for the county overall as a liaison with the departments.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Julie and Dana, welcome aboard, and we look forward to working with you. Very good.
And my condolences, John.
Sorry, John. Very good. All right, this time, we will take our consent calendar, items seven through 24. Are there any items which members want to handle separately?
Mr. Chairman, item 11 is a very positive item, and there are several gentlemen in the audience, I think, that would like an opportunity to speak. I haven't talked with Health and Human Services, so it's a surprise probably to them, but this is a very positive thing. I'd like to have item 11 pulled and addressed separately. It is a positive item. Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Not entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve, approve, sorry, approve consent calendar seven through 24, pulling item 11 for separate consideration.
Any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, and that takes us then to item 11, which is approving an agreement with Golden State Air Charter LLC to provide transportation via fixed-wing aircraft, which will allow critical patients requiring medical services in locations outside of Tulare County to be air transported more readily. And Davis was going to address this matter?
First, Mr. Chairman, let me apologize. Mr. Davis, it wasn't my intent to catch you by surprise, but I noticed a gentleman out here, and I wouldn't want to run the lack of them speaking publicly, especially where one of them saved my life. And so I'd like for him to have an opportunity. This is a, in my opinion, is a wonderful thing. I didn't want it lost in a consent calendar for the public because public health is one of the services that we, as board members, have a responsibility for, and you and Health and Human Services certainly contribute to that. So, John, thank you for the short notice. I think it is an extremely important agenda item.
And with that, I can thank you, actually. We, I think this will benefit the county entirely, and I guess we didn't pull it off. It's a consent. It's just kind of normal business for us. But we'd ask that your board contract and let us move forward, provide a better service.
Um, did you stage...
That's great.
Well, let me, let me tell you why I think it's so important. Because in the foggy...
I thought you might.
In the foggy area, it's extremely important that we transport people to other areas. Time is extremely important. It'll be based in Porterville, which is, of course, important to the District 5, but more importantly, it's available not only to Tulare Kings and Kern County, but there are times when transporting by vehicle or by helicopter is not possible. And so this contract doesn't cost the county anything. It's one more step in providing services to those who, through extreme illness or because of accidents where individuals must be transported to other facilities. And so with that, and no conversation from the ones in the audience that I was surprised at, I will move for approval of item 11 and thank John for working his way through that.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Maples. This time, we'll move to untimed items, item 25. Something which we can handle in the next 10 to 15 minutes.
Let's do it very quickly.
Oh, that's all right. If we're a few minutes beyond 9:30 our time, that'll be all right, too, John.
A preliminary comments for your board. I was asked a couple of times by the CIO to come before you and talk about the budgeting and how we do budgeting at the agency. It's such a human, I think, humongous project, and we'd probably be here all day. So I know you're under a short timeline. I think what might be more useful is to basically come to you and give you some different perspectives on our budget. By perspectives, I mean ways in which we look at this thing and ways in which we think about our budget. Some of this comes from you. Mr. Ashida, for example, has asked us at one time in the past to develop a look at drug and alcohol funding. That makes us look at our budget, look at where this money comes from across the whole budget. He wanted to know how all of the money was spent and where it came from. We provided that information to him and your board in a letter. But it just points out a way of looking at a budget very differently strategically. So I'm here today, I guess, to present some perspectives that many of you have already come up with, but to get them in one place, show you how we cut and slice this thing at different times. It's also kind of propitious in this sense that it's, we're looking at 10 years for the agency. Actually, almost our anniversary here. And in the, we set up the agency, or your board did, to basically reduce service fragmentation, increase the levels of direct services to the residents of Tulare County. And that last one, which I think sometimes gets downplayed, but is extremely important, to create financial flexibility and fiscal efficiencies. Where before you oftentimes, there are a lot of times to do the first two, bring a program to you, show how we've changed something, do structural changes. But we haven't come back very often and looked at the budget, and I suspect that's why oftentimes we get questions about this budget. This is how you'd probably look at it normally in a picture, look at budgeted expenditures and budgeted revenues. When you look at those revenues on the right-hand side of the screen, it really does start to tell you something, that there's a lot of revenues, there's a lot of different revenues, and it kind of gets complicated really fast. But this is what you would normally see in your Tulare County budget. Same thing for health. Although the representation here, and I think we put this in here, basically show you how things get lost. Because if you look at health there, it looks less complicated. Somehow, you know, just by pointing out there's federal and state monies, we haven't really told you much of what's going in there. There's a ton of grant programs, small grant programs, larger grant programs. They're all just subsumed under those larger headings. It doesn't tell you much. Your board did a, I think, a very good thing for the general reader when you changed how you presented your Tulare County budget. You basically provided enormous amount of information, it seems to me, and we've, in many ways, solved this problem of hiding material. This one is even worse. There's, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of grants, and there's a lot of allocations that come to Human Services. If you just look at it, it's federal-state. Kind of subsumes a lot of issues or makes them obscure. So we try to look at this kind of differently, and different times, depending on what it is we're trying to solve. One of the things we do is we try to look at the funding streams that come to our agency. And when you look at these funding streams, and there's just a few of them there, you can see that they start to get pretty long, and there's a lot of money involved. Some of them are $25,000, some of them are 24, 25, $30 million. In all, your Health and Human Services Agency operates with about $331 million, and there are over 110 different funding sources. Why would we mention that? Well, I think it's finally obvious to you because you know all of these grants are categorical. All of them have rules, all of them have reporting, fiscal reporting, and all of them have fiscal reporting. And so the flexibility comes in different way. We have to constantly juggle all these different funding sources and see how they can be used, one against or one with the other. Still, another way of looking at this budget, and is the way I alluded to earlier, Mr. Ashida's question raises, these kinds of look at things for us. How much is in the alcohol and other drugs budget? 8.2 million. If you look at the funding sources on the right, it'll tell you that there's a lot of different funding sources, some of them coming from TANF or Human Services, some of them coming from health, some of them coming from mental health. And, of course, the bulk of them coming from drug and alcohol funding. The programs on the left, that is really the thing you solved in the way you're doing your budget. You now give people programs for what they're looking at in the way of funding and expenditures. Same thing, done slightly different without the pie chart, but it basically says, "How much do we spend on maternal programs?" $6.8 million, but it's all across the agency, and it's the same kind of look we're trying to give you from Health Services. Lots of different programs. Mental Health Services has programs that relate and have to coordinate with the maternal programs. Cal Earn, we just picked up and moved, so it's now in the Health Department. Rather large program out of welfare, but it's better coordinated there. If you look at Children's Services, there's 36, almost $37 million being spent there. And Human Services, the obvious one is the Child Welfare Services there. It's a big expenditure for your board and for us. The Independent Living and the rest of those are on the preventative side. You've been dealing with those and agenda items that come to you on a regular basis, recommendations for funding. The community-based organizations basically manage those for us. Mental Health Services, of course, has a huge commitment to Children's Services. As you can see, Children's Mental Health, CPS relies on them. Then Health Services, excuse me, has its programs. All of these programs, and what we're seeing here in looking at the budget as a service area, all of them have to coordinate with one another, all of them have to communicate with one another, and to get the best bang for your dollar. And then, of course, we have different variations on the theme. All of you have, at one time or another, served on the Area Agency on Aging's board. You can see that's a complicated piece in and of itself, as a separate board, separate authority, separate budget. But it's enveloped, looking up in the left-hand corner there, it's enveloped in the Adult Services Program, which is $20 million, and it's largely composed of IHSS, the Public Guarding, and Health Protective Services, and enveloped those same services that the Area Agency on Aging provides. So that's looking at it kind of a service area. If we look at it as how it affects the community, it's kind of the same discussion in many ways. We spend about $35 million on individuals, on organizations, community-based, for-profit, and on-profit to actually provide services to our clients, to Tulare County citizens and residents here. Another way, of course, to look at this, and this came up, the reason I wanted to look at this again was that we had presented this as part of a slide in a welfare, or, excuse me, Human Services Program we presented to your budget, to your board. And Supervisor Conwy had pointed out at the end of that that this slide kind of struck her. There's a, there's $581 million being brought into the county every year by our eligibility workers who do open doors. But when we actually start looking at that across the agency, there are lots of other things, the WIC vouchers, there's the food vouchers that we have. And in fact, there's about $229, $30 million more dollars being spent in natural direct services. So when you really start adding it up, and when I started thinking that perhaps, after Supervisor Conwy's comment, maybe we ought to look at how much is really happening total, there's about, there's over $800 million being brought in here. That's a lot of service for your... That's a lot of service for your clients. That's a lot of effort to make things right. The way I think that we look at the budget as managers, you know, and, and after we've had to account for the outcomes and how well we spend our money is strategically, how do we leverage these dollars? And I think these are the six or seven things that have actually helped us make our budget. The TANF money, we got, we earned $56 million because we took 30% of our people off of welfare aid, cash aid, in the last 10 years. The state only gave us, of course, 25 million. But the point was, those monies were very flexible to us, and they've moved around the agency and in the community for services that we've purchased this, for this or that. Uh, but it was very useful money to us because it had less rules, there were only four, really. On the realignment transfers, we're here every year, and we're actually moving money from one side to the other side of the house, health to welfare, welfare to, um, mental health, all in an effort to kind of level out the vicissitudes of, of funding. You know, one year we're low on one thing, another year we're low on something else. But those realignment transfers help us to keep everything in balance. This kind of adjustment goes on perpetually. We buy services from other departments. So CWS turns around to mental health, and we know we need mental health services, we buy them from mental health. And that's either from mental health department or from one of the contracted providers that mental health provides for us. Excuse me. So it's another way in which we balance budgets, but we provide service, uh, doing it. Using programs to match each other. We've had programs in the past, um, initially Linkages was like this in the Aging Program, was all state money. We can use that as match against federal dollars, and we don't come to you for money. We use the local state dollars to match the federal dollars. So that was another trick. Lining up the units of services, we oftentimes have programs, like we were just citing, the Cal Earn Program, does many of the same things that the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Programs do in the health. Depending on who has the money, they can pay for that service. So if you actually have the same service, you have multiple funding streams going to it. You can pick and choose and balance your budgets that way. Spending up your allocations, and we know this, uh, this was a difficulty before the agency. We spend a lot of time trying to make sure that we use our money wisely, but that we use it, because if you don't use it, the phrase is, "You lose it." And, uh, we've had a, before the agency, we had a downward spiral, spiral in funding. State kept cutting us because we weren't using our money. Uh, it's taken us years to bring that back, and you only get little windows of opportunity for correction. Example, Adult Protective Services used to only have about $200,000 in it. There was one year we had, while they, while they opened up the funding formula and took it back under consideration, it's now over $600,000, because we walked through that door and spent the allocation and overspent the allocation. So there are strategies like that. Maximizing the federal participation is extremely important to us. It's now one of our initiatives. We took that to the federal government yesterday, and we took it to the state lobbyists before. We need a way, we need consideration to make sure that this valley, which, uh, has a large medical population and, um, a large poverty population, we need to make sure that the feds pay a bigger, bigger share. There are different kinds of ideas about carving this area out. Certainly the San Joaquin Valley Initiative has given us a huge opportunity to make that case. Uh, in fact, I think it's the first place we made our case, but this is going to be, I think, the place where we have to really focus our attention. So that's one way. Another way of looking at budget, just a set of strategies we're constantly employing, trying to make sure we maximize the dollar, maximize the services. There is the historical perspective. When we started 10 years ago, we had 254, 255 million dollars. There's now 331 million dollars in this budget. That belies an issue right there. No, no statement can tell you anything. What's also happened, and I mentioned it earlier, is $44 million went out of cash aid. So that really means that we increased the budget not by 30%, but by about 40 to 45% because that 44 million is no longer in the budget as cash aid to welfare recipients. It's now in there as services to people. So it's, it's a different use of the money, and it hides those kinds of shifts. As the percent of the total budget, the county contributions have gone from 4% to 6%, even though there's been huge growth in the budget. And one other way of saying that, of course, is that from 10 years ago to today, 2.00 million less in county money in our budget. Even that needs to be explained because we've had years where it's been a lot, lot more than 2.8 we've saved the county. This is about the least we've saved the county, and it's come because we've had increases in foster care and we've had increases in IHSS costs. Those things, uh, actually add up very fast for us. But even with those, we're still 2.8 million less than we were, than your county was paying 10 years ago. So we look at all that and we feel, um, at least we can give you in this amount of time some perspectives. And as I pointed out right at the beginning, I think these are questions you've asked us. We're just bringing them back collectively and asking if your board really, uh, really would like to ask us for either questions on any of these kinds of things, things you want, information you want. I feel, I hope you feel free, several of you have already, just ask us.
Thank you, John. And I, I think it's helpful to have this sort of a, um, comprehensive step back, kind of look at it, overall sort of perspective. Uh, you can, as big as this is, it's very easy to get bogged down in individual programs, departments, you know, that sort of thing. And, and to have it kind of presented in a comprehensive way like this, I think is helpful for us as policymakers, uh, I think probably to the public as well. Appreciate the presentation. Are there questions, comments from?
I'm not too sure that it's a question, John, but, uh, again, let me commend you for your appointment. As the agency director, never missed a beat, and I had a lot of questions, but every time I'd write one down, you'd answer it, so. But I am, on a serious note, um, going from the four department to the concept of the HHS, um, uh, agency. Uh, I'm assuming, John, that dealing with budgeting and with service and with, um, cross-training and et cetera, that it's made it easier, uh, even though as complicated as it is. Is that a correct statement? That, um, it, it's made it easier rather than when we had the four, uh, different departments?
I think it's easier in some important senses. We've gotten away from boom and bust cycles. I can remember building really quickly and then watching things collapse the next year or having to cut people. We went through that process just before the agency with mental health, where we had a huge growth and then there was a collapse. Uh, easier on people in that sense. Uh, we treat our, as you'd like to say, we treat our, our family, county family, a little better, it seems to me, uh, than we did 10 years ago. It's easier in the way of managing change because we look 18 months or longer out there now, as we know we have the resources to make the change and we know what's coming. Uh, we know what's coming in the sense that if we want to make that change, it takes this many steps and nothing gets done very rapidly. We have to constantly gauge where the funding, where the staffing, where the, the outcomes are. That process goes on over an 18-month to 24-month cycle. So when the agency has the ability to take a shock, uh, and plan through that time, I think it makes it a lot easier. In that regard, I would say yes. In regard, and you were acknowledging it in the question, in regard to literally seeing how many things you can actually know about in any one day, 110 funding sources, 365 contracts, uh, it gets much more complicated. But that's what we hire people for, and we have some very good ones, one of whom you've stolen from me just recently.
It's called proselyting.
I'm sorry?
Proselyting. That's what he did.
That's right.
Yeah, uh, Con.
Thank you.
Ms. Conway, excuse me.
Right. Thank you, John. I, I appreciate all the, the hard work that's gone into this. You know, the numbers in my mind are, are overwhelming. And I, I think you've laid out a form for us to, to help us, and, and I think the taxpayers to understand, um, a little bit better how this, I mean, what a tremendous part of our budget is, but this money doesn't come from the air. I mean, there's a tax dollars. And, uh, with either state or federally mandated programs that we're responsible for, but are not always funded. And so I think when you see these millions and billions of dollars, um, it's, it's important that we understand where that comes from. These, these are Californians' money, taxpayers' dollars. Whether this is where we would have chosen to invest our money, it's, it's not ours to say. We've been given the task that we have to deal with it. And California, as always, is a donor state. And I, I still believe that we're a donor county, if you will. I mean, we, uh, we, taxpayers pay a lot of taxes, and, uh, we don't always get our full share of return. And even though there are those that would argue with us that this is not where we would like to put our tax dollar, the current system tells us this is how it works. What I appreciate is the way you've laid this out to help us understand all those funding sources, every time there's a initiative or a proposition, or however all that is, how that money trickles down into the public use. It's sad to me that, that one of the businesses we're in in this county is poverty. We are in the business of poverty. But I appreciate the fact that you and your staff have, uh, have done yeoman's work in trying to make sense of this and put it in categories that, that not only this board, but the general public can understand, kind of help us gain a better sense of where we are and, and, uh, the responsibilities that we are, uh, given and that we must respond to. So, thank you. Hope I didn't go on too much, Mr. John.
Chairman, one, one last point before Supervisor Shida speaks, but I haven't heard the term for some time, but agency of last resort. Could you speak to that term dealing with, uh, county services, agency of last resort?
We have an awful lot of programs, as the Supervisor Conwy points out, that are mandated. Mandated for us to do, uh, we do those programs, uh, and we get a lot of federal and state money to do that. There are some cases in which federal and state monies aren't available, and by legislation, we're expected to provide services. So if the 50,000 code, uh, talks about medically indigent, well, that's Tulare County Medical Services. Our county pays for that. We have general assistance, our county pays for that. You get to decide in some cases what the rules governing that would be, in some cases you don't. But when we say the, uh, the agency of last resort and we're talking about health and welfare, um, that's in fact, I think, what we're referring to. There's a, there's another thing, I guess, and it's a quote, I, I think you actually picked up on some time ago. I like to think of the agency as, um, the promise and the peril of the agency is, there's nothing we can't do. That's the promise of, of the agency. The peril is there's nothing we can't do. And the difficulty here is in setting the priorities, figuring out what it is we are going to do, what we're mandated to do, what we're required to do by law, do all that, get that done. Then it seems to me, after that, it's a prioritization process, or it's your board deciding what it is by policy we should do, uh, do. Your strategic plan is going to do that for us, I hope, and that we'll have a better order in how we do things. But even when we've decided, even when in the context of a strategic plan, we can say, "This is what we think is most important, we will do this," it's in the context of those state and federal mandates, and it's in the context of the law that says, "You are the agency of last resort." We work with all of that, and I appreciate your comments because so much of it is constrained. We're stuck with rules, regulations, mandates, um, and it really limits our prerogatives in some respects. Strategic plan is going to focus us, and I, I really am looking forward to that in the next couple of years as we really get into it.
Before Mr. Maples asks you about the meaning of life, I'll let Mr. Shida ask it.
John, I'd like to thank you and your staff for putting this presentation together. I believe it's extremely important for the general public, not only the electeds, to understand where, what 50% of the county employees do. Coming newly elected to the board, I looked at the, the numbers of employees that were in this agency, and I had a great deal of concern, uh, about the size of it and, and the scope of, of what was in your purview of, of management. But basically, the general public is uneducated as to what services, Human Health Services provides, and this is an important tool to educate not only the electeds, but the, uh, the general public. I know we have a lot of philosophical differences, just when people ask about where their roads are, and they pay plenty of taxes, but this kind of shows where we're spending the funds from the state and the federal government, even though 90% of this or more is mandated. It's not something that Tulare County brings up, "These are the programs we want to do." We are mandated to, to provide these programs. I think part of my awakening or, or learning about your agency is the fact that I was concerned that a super agency sometimes may not be as efficient as some of the smaller agencies. But as I've been able to digest the information, it's quite obvious to me that the super agency that we have in, in the Human Health Services, uh, there's a lot of advantages to it. We have the, the financial flexibility, uh, we have the coordination between all these different revenue funds to where we can, we can direct them to where they need to be, or we can supplement them through the, uh, the use of the, the flexibility we have. I'm very pleased to see this type of presentation, and I wish we could get more coverage to the general public of what Health and Human Services actually does and how big your budget is. And I think it's, it's really eye-opening to, to understand that you have over 100 sources of, of revenue, and it's eye-opening to see how many services we actually provide or help provide through the nonprofits. So I, I think these, these type of meetings are very beneficial, uh, not only for your agency, but for other agencies, so the general public knows what we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shida. Mr. Cox?
Just real short, John, thank you for, uh, the hard work that you do. Your senior staff is a, and, and your, your team, I'll call them your team, I think we've talked about that before, is a breath of fresh air. And I want to, I appreciate you taking the opportunity, the rest of your senior staff, Cheryl, Kevin, Ray, to walk me through as I have questions and, and need to be taught, you know, these certain things, so that I can understand. You've been a breath of fresh air to work with. Uh, your, your staff has been absolutely wonderful. I probably bug Cheryl Durstmore than any of the other supervisors, and I want to appreciate, I appreciate her not losing her patience with me and putting up with my, uh, questions, but great staff. They, they've been very helpful to me and, and helping me to, you know, learn, through this learning process that I'm going through. So, uh, job well done, and thank you for, uh, the loan of one of your staff.
That's because she works in mental health, Phil.
She understands me, right?
My, my final comment, really, I just wanted to say was, again, thanks, uh, John, for bringing this to us. But as big as Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency is, what would be, and I, this is not a job for your, for you, but it's something for us to contemplate, how big is, uh, the effort to reach out to people to improve their lives, whether it's physical health, mental health, financial needs? And I just was thinking, I just wrote down some things, the private sector, the churches of our county, the, the various foundations and organizations, the First Five Commission, uh, the, the services provided by cities, sometimes the senior programs provided by cities, the district hospitals that people pay taxes to that provide indigent services at the hospitals and medical care, uh, the special districts that provide healthcare, vector districts and so forth. And I've just touched the surface, uh, and the volunteers, not only within our own county, but I mean, in this county as a general rule, all the people who could contribute and volunteer their time and services to help other people. It truly is amazing. And, and it would be interesting if someone has ever kind of tried to bring all that information together, kind of like we talk about what is Tax Freedom Day, you know, people who take the time to figure out what, how, how long of the year you work before you actually have-
Making a dollar?
Making a dollar for yourself as opposed to paying taxes. But similarly, there is a huge, huge amount of money and effort and energy that goes into trying to help other people less fortunate than ourselves. And you have just given us a very significant window into that, but we know it's not a complete story. There are many, many, many other partners, and a lot of we work with them, but they have other spending streams that they bring to the plate that also help. So it, it's a marvelous thing, really, uh, just to think about that, a society that cares about people in that fashion. So, thank you very much for bringing that up this morning.
Thank you. On behalf of those 2,000 employees and the 600 volunteers, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. At this time, we'll take up our 9:30 timed items, and we'll start with item number two, a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider establishment of the following agricultural preserves. And Mr. Finney is making his way to the front. And Mr. Finney is making his way to the front. Good morning, George.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
You could raise the podium up, I want to make sure the world hears you, George, this morning.
Okay. Um, for you this morning is the last round of agricultural preserve applications for this year. Six applications are on your agenda, all of them meet the requirements for, uh, under state law and county guidelines for formation of zones of agro preserves and are recommended to you. Uh, there are some oddities on some of them, I'll just highlight. In the first application, the Albeetree application, east of Fountain Springs, Fountain Springs, that includes a 10-acre life estate parcel that is actually going out of existence, because the recipient of that life estate is, uh, has, is deceased, and under state law, that's not a parcel eligible for saleies of finance anyway, so that'll be taken care of shortly.
Death and taxes take care of everything.
The, um, third one down, the Secora application near Kingsburg, that is within a mile of the city of Kingsburg, but of course, it's in Tulare County, not in Fresno County. We did notify Kingsburg, and we did get an email, uh, late last week from the city planner indicating no, no objections. Uh, the next one, the Razebos applications, this is for property 10-1 mile of the city of Isalia. It's within the Isalia urban planning area, but not inside the urban development boundary, so it's outside the 20-year area. It's also backed up with the city's general plan, which shows it is agriculture, and it's also within a, one of the airport zones for the Isalia Municipal Airport. So, this is a pretty good match, we believe, and, uh, the city indicated they had no problems with it, in fact, was supportive.
We've had no objections from any of the cities, otherwise would have the authority to do so.
Right. Uh, last two applications are both enlargements of existing preserves. The circumstances are, are very similar for both of them. Two separate parcels are being attached to a preserve that's in between the two parcels, which happens to be under the same ownership as the, as the applicant, so it, it all works out well. So, those will be handled as expansions. Just one note on the McAllen Ranch and Miller application, that's in the early March, uh, Traver area, but it's outside of the early March study area, and it's also outside of the new Hamlet boundary proposal for Tevisston.
George, you said Traver, but I don't-
Did I say Traver? I meant Tevisston.
Okay. There is a difference.
There is a difference, yes. And then the Sizemore application, that's in the Kennedy Meadows area. The only unusual part of that is, when we looked on the USGS maps, lo and behold, it was the Sacatorum Meadows airstrip shown on one of the parcels, but the optics of the form does that that airstrip has been terminated, and it's simply being used as open space now. That concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Any questions, comments from board members? Now, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address us on this matter is invited to come forward, give us your name and address at this time, and seeing and hearing no one, we will close, close the comment period, bring it back for board action.
Chairman, move approval, item two, with the, forming the new ag preserves and two enlargements.
Second. If motion second, please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous in support. Thank you, Mr.-
One, uh, final comment, this, uh, this is, as I say, was the last round for this year, total of 1,773 acres this year, uh, which 976 are non-prime, and 697 are prime.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I can, George, before you go, I'm assuming that the question has been asked before, but just to be sure, all of these that we are forming, the new preserves, all have a clause that says if the state withdraws their funding, then the contract-
The contract has the clause, not the preserve.
Thank you for raising that point, Mr. Madens. Brings us to item number three, another public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize the middle of a 2006 Community Development Block Grant General Allocation Application, and provide citizens the opportunity to comment on the expenditure of the CDBG program income funds. Good morning, Mr. Hader. Morning, Frank.
Chairman, members of the board. We do. Uh, we're going to split up here so we can keep an open mic for the public. We're here this morning to actually present two public hearings, uh, one for the 2006 Community Development Block Grant General Allocation Application, and one for the 2006 Community Development Block Grant General App, General Planning and Technical Assistance and Economic Development Application. We've had some changes in the, um, CDBG, where they've opened up some more money for us each year, so we're trying to reach out and help as many communities as we possibly can. This is on top of the 18 open grants that we currently have and the six that are pending state contracts, so our plate is very full, and we're going to make it even fuller. We are required to do the obligatory presentation, which Frank will present to you.
I have a question for you, Bill. Is it possible to do the presentation one time for the book, for the two items?
Yes.
That's good news. That's how we're going to proceed. Unless Frank wants to read twice.
No, thanks.
Okay.
I ask for your forgiveness ahead of time. My name is Frank Reese. I work for the Tulare County Resource Management Agency, and the Board of Supervisors is holding two public hearings today to review and receive comments, and to solicit input regarding the authorization to submit three applications for the fiscal year 2006, 2007 State Community Block Grant Program, general and planning and technical assistance allocations. Citizen participation is also sought for the use of CDBG program income as matching funds and local leverage for these applications. To simplify this process, county staff will present one address before your board to explain the purposes of both public hearings. Spanish translation was advertised, however, no one requested these services. A sign-in sheet is available. While signing in is voluntary, we would appreciate your doing so. The objective of the CDBG program is to develop viable communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. The 2006, 2007 funding cycle and application process is significantly different from prior funding rounds for both the general and planning and technical assistance allocations. The CDBG program has increased the maximum award amount for its general allocation to $1 million this year. Tulare County has previously received an award reservation for $453,750 for the 2006, 2007 cycle, making the county eligible to apply for an additional $546,250. In this funding round, the CDBG program is encouraging jurisdictions to apply for public works activities by awarding bonus points in the rating and writing, rating and ranking process to all infrastructure projects. Eligible activities under the General Allocation Program include, but are not limited to, housing rehabilitation, housing acquisition, new housing construction, community facilities, public services, and public works. Again, this funding cycle has an emphasis on public works projects. The CDBG program has also increased the maximum award amount for its planning and technical assistance allocations to $140,000 per fiscal year. The county is eligible to apply for a maximum award limit of $35,000 for nonspecific planning activities, and another $35,000 for specific planning activities for both the general and economic development projects. Altogether, that adds up to $140,000. Eligible planning and technical assistance activities under the general allocation include, but are not limited to, affordable housing needs and development studies, community needs assessments, housing condition surveys, infrastructure needs analysis, environmental reviews or studies, and final plans and specifications in support of general allocation projects. Eligible planning and technical assistance activities under the economic development allocation include, but are not limited to, business attraction and job create retention studies, business development studies, needs assessments for business revolving loan funds, infrastructure needs analysis, environmental reviews or studies, and over-the-counter pre-applications for economically focused activities. Projects funded with CDBG allocations must carry out, must carry out at least one of the three national objectives. One, benefit to targeted income group persons, including low-income, minority, handicapped, and/or elderly persons. Two, aid in the prevention of, and/or elimination of slums and blight. Or three, meeting urgent community development needs. It is recommended today that the county apply for a $546,250 general allocation grant to provide gap financing for the following projects. The Tuleville Water System Improvement Project, Plainview Water System Improvement Project, and the Ridge Grove Well Rehabilitation Project. The proposed projects will alleviate severe health and safety hazards plaguing the water systems in these communities, and will meet the CDBG national objective of providing benefit to communities consisting of at least 51% targeted income group persons, as evidenced by census data and income surveys. In association with this application, CDBG program income in the amount of $100,000 is proposed to be used as local leverage to complete improvements for the Ridge Grove Well Rehabilitation Project. It is also recommended today that the county apply for a $70,000 planning and technical assistance allocation grant for the following general allocation planning activities. The Traver Park Revitalization Study and the Tuleville Water System Improvement Project. The purpose of the Traver Park Revitalization Study is to conduct a preliminary development study that will outline the reuse of an underutilized eight-acre property owned by Traver School. It is also proposed that the county use CDBG funds to develop the final plans and specifications for the completion of the Tuleville Water System Improvement Project, and these activities will meet the CDBG national objective of providing benefit to communities consisting of at least 51% targeted income group persons. The CDBG program income in the amount of $700 is proposed to be used to fulfill the matching funds requirement for the Tuleville Water System Improvement Project. Lastly, it is recommended today that the county apply for a $70,000 planning and technical assistance allocation grant for the following economic development planning activities. The Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund and the OTC, the over-the-counter pre-application for Licon Project. Sorry, I was getting into alphabet soup there. It is also, it is proposed that the county use CDBG funds to conduct a market study to determine the demand for a new loan fund for businesses located in the unincorporated areas of the county, and to develop the necessary systems to establish a Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund. CDBG funds will also be used to prepare the scope of work and cost estimate for the rehabilitation of the North Hanger at Sequoia Field Airport, and to prepare a CDBG economic development over-the-counter pre-application for Licon Rebuilding Company. These activities will meet the CDBG national objective of creating jobs for targeted income group persons. CDBG program income in the amount of $1,400 is proposed to be used to fulfill the matching funds requirement for both of these economic development activities. Your board is being asked to authorize both the submission of these three applications to the state CDBG program, and the expenditure of CDBG program income as matching funds and local leverage for these activities. As indicated previously, the purpose of these hearings is to provide the opportunity to ask questions, and encourage attendees to express their point of views. We have invited members of the public to submit written comments to the County of Tulare Resource Management Agency, Community Development and Redevelopment Division located at 5961 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California 93277. In addition, information and supporting documents are on file and may be obtained at the aforementioned address between the hours of 7:30 and 5:30 PM on Mondays through Thursdays, and between 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM on Fridays. Citizens will be advised of program progress on an annual basis at a public hearing scheduled for this purpose. No one will be displaced as a result of these grant, grant activities. Technical assistance for proposal development is available to groups who represent the targeted income group, should any be requested. All Tulare County CDBG programs are implemented in ways that are consistent with the county's general plan and commitment to fair housing and equal opportunity. Applicants are not, and will not be discriminated against on the basis of race, color, ancestry, religion, national origins, sex, marital status, or physical handicap. Thank you for the opportunity to present before you today. I welcome any questions that you may have regarding these applications.
Frank, could you repeat that?
I think you did a great job.
You did a wonderful job. I don't know if I've ever heard it with such enthusiasm. Well done, and I'm glad you took that speech class. Uh, thank you very much. That was great. At this time, are there any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Cox?
Two quick questions. I asked Mr. Hader this earlier this week, so he's going to be prepared. Coming from the, the city of Isalia, the amount of redevelopment CDBG funding we, the city got makes this look like pennies. Why do we get so little? And give us a short answer. How come, if you compare the county, its poverty level, the, the potential redevelopment areas, why do we get such a small amount of money compared to a city that has less population and less area than the county?
And the, the short answer that I gave you, and I'll prestate it for the entire board, um, this is a competitive program, therefore, the, the pot is rather limited. They are opening it up, so we are getting more money than we have had in past years. The city of Isalia qualifies as an entitlement community. We have looked at going the entitlement route, but we would actually lose money. We currently get $500,000 of the general allocation, and I believe, Laura, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we'd drop down to $300,000 if we went entitlement, so, um, the system doesn't appear to be fair, and we're doing the best we can with what we have available. Uh, I'd like to add some comments here on what we're doing with these projects, and how we're spreading the money around. Uh, with Tuleville, we're providing gap financing to the, uh, several million dollars they've already gotten in USDA and DWR funds, but they're still coming up a little short. In Plainview, uh, they have USDA funds to put the well in and the distribution system. There is no money to do the connections for those that are income-qualified. That's the purpose of $140,000, is to pay for those connections. In Ridge Grove, we have a community of almost 3,000 people with two active wells, one of which has high nitrates. The third well, uh, has a rotten egg smell. It has hydrogen sulfides and a sand problem, so the cure is relatively inexpensive, as opposed to drilling a new well, uh, which would give them good quality and quantity of water, uh, to help dilute, uh, the wells that have problems. This day and age, we're looking for ability to mix waters in order to keep below the state standards for pollution. On the technical assistance grant side, and working with the school district in Traver, they've had that parcel for years, um, have never really developed it at all. We're looking at the possibility of a mixed-use housing and commercial development, a small park, and the potential for maybe relocating a county fire station. With Licon Industries, we're looking at a company that may be, uh, very interested actually in relocating to Sequoia Field. They're currently in the Isalia Industrial Park. They're outgrowing their facility, um, and they're a growing business. And the Business Assistance Revolving Loan Fund is an extension of our micro-enterprise program, uh, to provide assistance to the small businesses in the small communities to help them grow, especially when they're, uh, cash-strapped, you know, and... Any questions?
Give other questions, Cox.
If I can, well, I do have one other question, one, one quick comment. It is my, uh, one of my goals to, I think I've mentioned this to Jeff also, to have this board recommend legislation that would address the inequities of the redevelopment. I realize we're, you know, David fighting Goliath here, maybe even worse, um, but I would like, you know, us to consider, uh, introducing legislation that would address the, uh, you know, inequities in the CDBG funding and redevelopment funding that the county receives. Last question. They're not, the, the pages aren't numbered, but about 10 or 12 in are the Tule Water System Improvement Project, Project Site Map. It shows a proposed 10-inch water main to Phase 2, and there's no extension map that, that shows me where that might be going to. I looked on Tuleville, and there's a 10-inch water main going to what? New well. Well, it says proposed 10-inch water main Phase 2. Is the Phase 2 going to a well?
The, the Tuleville Water Project is, is broken up into three phases. One phase, they're going to be actually drilling a new well in the community to replace a, a bad well that they have, and then they're going to be connecting that well to the, to the main, the current water distribution system, um, to, which have two water mains going down Alfred and Morgan Street. Phase 3 is actually going to replace those water mains down Alfred and Morgan, and it's actually going to be a complete loop around the system. Phase 3 is awesome, so that's what's going to include Phase 3. So, eventually, Alfred, Morgan, and Spruce will all be in a looped system, so...
Well, I'm asking about, so it's Phase 2, a 10-inch water main, is existing well down here, south of Tuleville, or...
No, no, the existing well, I, I believe, is, is in a parcel just off of the North Street right there.
Yeah, but there, there's, it shows an additional line going south.
I think that might have been an, an older drawing that was done in a previous preliminary engineering study.
Phase 2 originally included a connection to Exeter.
So, we might want to update our map before we give it to the-
Yeah, Exeter declined to participate.
Okay, so we need to change this, and this is incorrect. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Shida.
This project-
This project has taken a great deal of time and a great deal of participation by not only our staff, but self-help enterprises and the people involved in the community of Tulleville, Plainview, Traver, Rich Grove. I think these type of projects should serve as a model to other communities that face similar problems that we are, as a county, in self-help with self-help's help—help.[634.66][634.66](laughter) We are moving to remedy a lot of these problems, but probably the most important element we need to make these projects work are the individuals within the existing communities. We cannot do it without the help of the people who live in these communities. And it's taken—a—it's been a real struggle in some of these communities to get the— to get all the paperwork done, to have the meetings, to get buy-in from—the residents that it directly affects, but it's going to take that core in these communities for us to succeed. And I want—that's probably the most important lesson I'd like everybody to take with him, is we need the community support.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on items 3 or 4 are invited at this time to come forward, give us your name and address, and please tell us which item you're speaking to for the record. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Deanda, and I'm a resident of Early Mart, Connie Conway's district. I want to wish you all happy Halloween and a safe Halloween. But just one comment there. I'm not here to oppose this. I'm just one—I see that word "citizens" there, and to me, that's problematic for a lot of the communities listed above, and I'm not going to say why or what, but maybe if that could be changed to community members.
I believe that the language you see there probably is statutory in nature, so it's not like we have the discretion to change it. We simply comply with the state or federal statutes that mandate these actions, and that's the language you see. So it's not like we choose those words. They're the words that are—we have to use in the presentation.
Well, actually, I'm on the California Environmental Justice Advisory Committee, and I go to Sacramento every three or four months to talk about these types of things. And having the word "citizens" there is a problem, because most of the people that live in these communities are not citizens. And then—
So Teresa, when you're in Sacramento, then that message needs to be delivered to the folks in Sacramento that can actually change that language. It's not within our purview to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not like we choose the language that you see here. This is—this is what we're required to do by law, and so we don't have the authority to change that kind of language.
Okay, and then it says the opportunity to comment on the expenditure. I would hope that their comments would be taken into—into action, not just listened to, but also taken into action. And that's all I'll say.
Good morning. My name is Francisco Martinez.
My name is Francisco Martinez.
I'm the president of the Water Board in Plainview.
Can you give us your address, please?
19—
Vista—
I'm sorry, 19?
783—
19783 Vista—
Avenida—
Avenue—
Strathmore—
Strathmore.
Thank you. See?
I want to thank you for all your support and everything that you're doing to provide helpful—I mean, healthy water for us. We're grateful, and at this point, what the gentlemen were mentioning, and that's where we're in need at this point. I also wanted to mention at this time that we're in need of also not just the water, but also the sewer system. But because we are on septic tanks there in Plainview, I mean, this could also be also contaminating the water. Thank you.
Thank you for telling us.
While I ask for—
Mr. Chairman, support the item. One moment, please.
If we could, just for the record, sir, if you could identify yourself, your name as the translator for Mr. Martinez?
Lupe Martinez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Good morning.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
My name is Domitila Lemos.
My name is Domitila Lemos.
The residente of Plainview.
I'm a resident from Plainview.
And first, I want to thank God first for having you listen to us. And especially for all the help that you have been giving us in order to get the water. And I want to thank you for listening to us and for everything that you're doing for us in Plainview. And everywhere we have gone, we have tried to petition for the betterment of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address this this morning, this matter? Well, it's great. We don't often have people show up for our hearings to actually speak, and so it's good to have folks come forward this morning, and we appreciate your support. I just wanted—I will now close the public comment period and make this comment that was alluded to by Mr. Hader and in the presentation. These funds are not insignificant funds, but their real purpose, it seems to me, in help is in providing gap funding and providing the kind of seed money which is needed to make projects happen. Along with these funds comes the needs of self-help, grants and loan applications from USDA, and various funding sources. So it's the way—the ability to take these monies and make them actually grow and magnify in their purpose that really has the real benefit, I think, to the communities. So we appreciate the hard work of Mr. Hader and his staff, and it's a very interesting work that they are involved in. Are there other questions or comments from board members? If not, I would entertain a motion. I think we'll take individual motions for 3 and then for 4. Individual or votes? Yes, we'll take individual motions. I move approval for item 3. Second? We have a motion, a second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your votes. The vote is unanimous in support. Item 4.
We have approval, item 4, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Second. We have a second. Please cast your votes for item 4. And again, the vote is unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your participation. At this time, we will adjourn as the Teleri County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Teleri County Redevelopment Agency on item 5. This is to authorize commitment and expenditure of Teleri County Redevelopment Agency funds in the amount of $100,700 from the following sources: Rich Grove, $100,000 to be used as a local leverage for the 2006 Community Development Block Grant General Allocation Grant Application; and Traver, $700 to be used as a match for the general planning and technical assistance application. Overapproval.
Second.
It's a public hearing?
Public hearing.
I thought you included all three of them.
Actually, no, it's not a public—
At this time, we will—
It's not a timed item. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's timed items, not a public hearing? All right.
Mr. Maples was good.
Mr. Counsel. I knew that. I really do it all the time. You would question the man who invented— Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes.
I'm sorry. For clarification, who's second?
I did.
He knew what she was doing. And if the vote is unanimous, we will adjourn as the Teleri County Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the Teleri County Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Laurie. And this will bring us to a public hearing, and this is a request from the Resource Management Agency to deny the appeal filed by Raul and Joanne Gomez and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve special use permit number PSP 05-096ZA to establish a church facility on 6.69 acres in the AE20 Exclusive Agricultural 20-acre Minimum Zone located on the east side of Lover's Lane, Road 140, approximately 550 feet south of Caldwell Avenue, south of Isalia, subject to conditions set forth in ZA Decision Number 2785. Good morning, Ms. Case, and welcome back. I hope you're feeling well.
Good morning. Yes, I'm limping a little here, but wearing a costume on my foot. Okay, this item is a—it was a special use permit, PSP 05096ZA, a request by Calvary Worship Center, Farmersville, to establish a church facility on a 6.69-acre parcel in the Exclusive Agricultural 20-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located to the southeast of Isalia, on the east side of Lover's Lane, which is Road 140, approximately 550 feet south of Caldwell Avenue, which is Avenue 280. And public hearings were held, administrator, in July and August. There was public testimony in favor and in opposition to the project, and a letter of opposition was received and is included in your packet. The opposition considered the traffic on Lover's Lane, as well as the area being agricultural. There would be overspray from agricultural pesticides, and that the rural setting would be disrupted, and water would be used for non-agricultural uses. This is an areal, probably about years old. The site is currently in an orchard, and at this time, the city limits is located at the south—the northwest corner of—this doesn't have a corner. Right there, this is the city limits of Isalia, and so the site is about 550 city limit line.
Mr. Chair, if I may, while you have that map up, can—the city of Isalia is actually undergoing a master plan or a specific plan area. Do you want to show where the boundaries of that are?
They're—they're located on the west side where the southeast Isalia plan is. I have been in contact with Mike Olmos of the city of Isalia, and he indicated this site is within their 129,000 growth area and designated for public office, and a church facility would be a conditional use in that zone—in that designation. So they—they said that this is consistent plan. Have you received the letter from the city of Isalia? Okay.
Yes.
I would like to address some of the points of that letter. I received it yesterday. It was hand-delivered. The city of Isalia had pointed out that site is—is near the city, and there are traffic issues, and I'll just go down their points. Number one was to dedicate additional right-of-way. Well, there is already 110 feet, so that's taken care of. Number two, that we require curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Lover's Lane, and that is a condition of approval, although we have it to county standards because it is a county road. They are requesting a street light installed on the main driveway. If we were to require an actual street light, the county would be responsible for the energy cost of that, and it has not been the policy of the county to do that on an individual site such as this. So that one, I—we did not have in our conditions. Number four, that they wanted the Isalia improvement standards to be followed, and we have indicated the county improvement standards. Number five asks for a raised center median for left-turn-only pocket, and that is already included in a condition of approval, and that they don't want any left-turn-out movements, and that there should be a barrier of at least 100 feet. And we have included in our condition that this be designed and reviewed by our engineering division. I've already spoken with them. They thought that this sounded what they would be looking for, so I don't think that that will be a problem. Number six, that they want street trees installed along Lover's Lane. There is a requirement for landscaping, and we can see that they include some trees in that landscape strip. They wanted the city of Isalia Engineering Division to review and comment on the engineering improvements, and our engineering division indicated that while this is county property— within the county, on a county road, that they didn't see this as being a necessary step. And then number eight about—
Excuse me, did you say unnecessary or unnecessary?
It would be unnecessary. We have an engineering review of all the projects, county, and they would issue encroachment permits and— And then number eight being for future connection to city sewer and cow water systems. They are proposing at this time to be on a septic tank and a well, and this would be possible to be a condition that you would want to add, that in the future, when it is available, that they would be required to connect, and we've put that kind of condition before on projects, so that might be a possibility to add that one.
Isn't that a requirement anyways? If you—if they're—if they're in the city, if a septic fails, they have to hook up anyways, if it's available.
If it fails. I believe this one's going a step farther in saying, when it becomes available, then they would have to connect. And that's possible if—if we made it a condition, we could—they've actually have that in here as one of the options if—during failure, or the other one was not to allow the second phase until it's available. So there's actually three options within that condition. Okay, so going further onto this, so on September 5th, the zoning administrator issued a decision of approval of the project with subject to conditions of approval. This has a church seating capacity of 350, and you may hear testimony. There was a project located just to the south on this 19-acre site, and that was 11 years ago. Things were a little different at that time. The city was a mile away, and there was—the—the property owners were actually those in opposition to this current project, and this—the site wasn't in the urban development boundary at that time where it is now. So our feeling at this time was that this project on the smaller parcel was in proximity of the city and that urban development was more likely to occur in the near future, so that it was not taking up the farmland. And so this was approved and has been appealed, and staff is recommending that you deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision for approval.
Further, any questions or comments from board members? Not, this is a public hearing. At this time, we open a public hearing, and those wishing to address this matter, please come forward, give us your name and address. Good morning.
My name is Joanne Gomez. I live at 27684 Road 140 in Isalia. This is a little intimidating.
Oh, that's all right.
Please bear with me. Just to give you just quick, a little bit about my background, the background of my husband, and the background of my family. We have lived in and around agriculture for many, many years. My husband and I are both employed in agriculture, so it's very important to us. I've outlined just a few points I'd like to bring to your attention, and I'll try to be very brief. Number one, we do know that an environmental impact report was not made. The site—the other site that was mentioned that she's saying 11 years ago, there was a environmental impact report required on that site before the—the permit could—
was a environmental impact report required on that site before the, the permit could be considered. In reading the plans for this particular facility, they are looking at one hundred and twelve parking spaces, and if you take one hundred and twelve parking spaces and multiply that by the times that they will use this facility each week, that will certainly have an impact on the surrounding agricultural property. A negative declaration was filed for this project, and it was stated that the zoning administrator hereby finds that there's no substantial evidence that the proposed special use permit will have a significant effect on the environment. Of course, our question would be, does the zoning administrator have the authority to make that determination when no study has been made on the impact the increased trips inside agricultural property will create? The next point, of course, that has been mentioned is our major concern about the increased traffic in that area, and the left-hand turning across two lanes of traffic. You may not be familiar with exactly what it looks like there, but Caldwell and Lever's Lane is a hazardous intersection, and just a few feet past where you cross Lever's Lane, it narrows from four lanes into two, and we have witnessed many people trying to make the light, lying across that intersection, and we feel that not only will it be hazardous for the cars to be turning left across the two lanes of traffic during the foggy season, but also the cars that are slowing down to negotiate the left-hand turn pocket as cars are coming fast across that intersection behind them. The other point is, we are concerned about the septic and sewer systems being so close to an active irrigation ditch. I'm sure you're all aware of the news reports of the E. coli and such things that are contaminating our food sources. There is an active for many, many, many years, fruit and vegetable stand right behind this where this facility is going to be built, so that is a concern. In conclusion, there has been much said about anyone who would object to the construction of a church on this site, and that is not our point. The fact of the matter is, if it were not a church requesting to build at this site that is still zoned AE twenty, there would not be a consideration for granting a special use permit at this time. To us, it does not matter whether this church, this is a church project or not, we would object to any construction at this time on land that is still being used for agriculture and zoned AE twenty. The newly-elected city council of Visalia stated that they wanted to see vacant land within the city limits of Visalia filled in first before developing the rural areas, and considering the amount of vacant land within the city limits of Visalia, this proposed project certainly flies in the face of that statement. We realize that this land is within the Visalia urban area boundary and is slated for urban development sometime in the future. However, as stated by Ms. Gates, the county uses the term near future. However, none of us have a crystal ball, and we really cannot say what near future really means. I do appreciate your attention, and I submit this respectfully.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez, appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to address this on this matter? Good morning.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors, my name is Dennis Kemp, and I'm here representing Cavalry Worship Center. Our church has been active for more than thirty years on the city of Farmersville, and we simply have a population that no longer lives in the city of Farmersville, primarily we're a Visalia-based congregation. More than two-thirds of our people live in the city of Visalia. We had a, well, we considered a wonderful opportunity to relocate to an ideal location that can serve our existing congregation, both from the city of Visalia, from the city of Farmersville, and Tulare, and offer some very good opportunities for growth for our church. We have patiently worked through this process with the county and all the agencies, and just as a note, we submitted our special use permit application in September two thousand five. Also as a note, the city of Visalia responded three days ago, so after having had access to this information for more than a year, their information is quite late, and I will address some of those issues, they're, they're very, very minor concerns on those, so that's really not a major issue. Our goal is to provide a religious worship facility in enhanced southeast Visalia. Currently, there are really no churches in southeast Visalia. The goal that we have is to enhance the area and be good neighbors to everyone around us, including those people that currently object to the property being changed in its We have addressed, as the county has demonstrated and stated, we have addressed every issue regarding the use of the property, regarding the sewer facilities, regarding the ingress and egress issues, traffic control, building size, setback, everything that we have proposed is within, within the recommended design requirements of the county and state regulations. The one thing that we think is not reasonable is to delay the project. So far, the project has been delayed successfully from July time period through the appeals process, and we recommend denying the appeal and allowing us to move forward. We have sold our existing property, we are, in the month of January, we will be relocating to a temporary location. This property has been owned by the church for almost a year, we are currently managing it as a farming operation, and we really look forward to the successful building of a wonderful facility that enhances southeast Visalia. It's been stated earlier, and it is no, no doubt that churches only enhance cities. We remove people from off the street into situations that make them productive citizens. We provide opportunities for social benefits of the area other than just a church facility. You only have to drive up and down Caldwell to see the multi-use of all the facilities that are currently on Caldwell. The only thing I would like to be very specific and add is, I would like to comment about one issue particularly with the city, make that two issues. We want to conform to the city requirements. We want to avoid getting ourselves into a conflict between the city of Visalia and the county of Tulare regarding permitting. There are conflicts, we hope that we, that our boss is the county of Tulare. The one condition regarding connecting to the sewer, the city specifically states in their letter a requirement of connecting when sewer facilities are available within three hundred feet of the perimeter of the property. We would like to change the wording to conform to the Uniform Plumbing Code required by the state, and I'll specifically cite seven one three point four, which that number, according to the state, is two hundred feet, and also the Uniform Plumbing Code defines availability of sewer, a little bit different than the paragraph of the city, but we would like to make that point very clear. Thank you for listening.
If I might ask a question from clarifications to Kemp?
Yes.
Are you, are you saying that, that you, the church is agreeable to more stringent requirements on the plumbing than is currently being required by the zoning administrator? Or are you, I'm not quite, it's not clear to me what you're, what you're saying.
I'll attempt to restate that. Currently, we are conforming to the requirements that the county is applying to us. The city is asking to make the connection distance a little more difficult on us than the county is. The city is defining connection conditions more restrictive. For example, they refuse in the paragraph to allow us to proceed with a phase two, which is, and our goal is a multipurpose facility, and not an issue of sewer at all, but they want to hold us at, they want to prevent us from proceeding with phase two until we connect to the sewer, whether it's available or not.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, and in our opinion, that is not reasonable, the sewer must be made available. We would like for the, for that paragraph to meet the state requirements, and their requirement is in excess of that.
If I may, I mean, at this point, this board is in control, I mean, I don't think you need to offer that, I don't think this board is going to make you, add that requirement in there, you might work when it becomes available to the site, which would make it, you know, a lot less expensive for you to do.
Yes, Mr. Kemp.
Mr. Kemp, how, how long has the church owned the property?
Since March of two thousand six.
Purchased from a farmer?
Yes. Purchased from a Mr. Phillips.
Other questions for board members?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on this matter this morning? Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment period. This matter, before we...
I just have questions for, if I may, just clear up a couple of things. Right now, as it is, it's a right turnout only, correct? From the parking lot, you can only turn out, they can only turn out right and go right? That was one of the concerns that Ms. Gomez had, and it's not proposed that they're able to cross the traffic and, and turn left, there, it's a right turnout only, correct?
There would be a left turn into the site, but not left turn out of the site.
Yeah, but right turnout only, and I think that was one of the concerns, so it's a right turnout only, you cannot turn left, you can't cross traffic to go to the southbound traffic, so that's not, that's not in their...
Actually, my concern was the left-hand turn across opposing traffic.
So with a, with a raised median and a turnout, and a turnout lane, I don't see that as a problem.
What, this is not on our closed session agenda by an omission, it was intended to be, and there were some legal issues that were raised, and I'd like to have counsel, meeting our council, so in order to do that, we need to have an urgency item...
Could I recite the ground for the urgency item?
Absolutely.
That, that would be that facts came to the board's attention after the agenda was posted, actually specifically, I believe it was yesterday, when there was a, a hand-delivered letter, might have been Friday, from the city of Visalia, expressing their concerns, and also there's been some changed information today, which, and if the board wants to act on this today, they need to do this as an urgency item.
All right, I would like to take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second to this matter is an urgency item in closed session, please cast your votes. Motion...
Chairman, a question if I may, before we go to closed session, I'm looking at one of the concerns, and that is Cameron Creek, and I'm looking at the scale down at the bottom, but I'm, I'm not too sure I'm perusing correctly, but if it was hooked up to sewer, city sewer and water, it would not be an issue, but until such time, that would be an issue. What is the distance from the, would be the northeast corner, I guess, or the, I guess it's northeast, from Cameron Creek? Can you give me an approximate distance?
That's approximately five hundred feet.
So there's roughly five hundred feet from the corner of the site to the point that Cameron Creek would be affected, and I'm wondering, in my mind, the flow, it would take probably an engineer or someone to determine that fairly, but what would, the flow wouldn't go to the northwest, the flow probably would go from the north, south, or northeast.
To the southwest.
Southwest, I'm not too sure of that, but that would be a concern that I would have.
Very distant.
Thank you.
Very good. This time, it's brought to a adjourned closed session, and we will return in one time.
We'll build and jump two points around that break.
Did I activate that one? I want to make sure I did.
Yes, okay, good.
I think it, yeah. They're not there.
No, what, go up? Got that item at the time? Awesome, that's very...
Got to activate one of them, so now I have to go back and do it. No, actually, I won't have tomorrow, that's what I'm concerned about. But I thought I had a note here, where did I put those notes? Would it, where would you see the notes if you had them?
They would be under that, that item.
I lost them.
And it could just be that they got put under another, another item, you may have had another item highlighted, so a lot of times, it's easier to find them the next day, later this afternoon, when we're looking at it from a different perspective.
Oh, I mean, it's...
We have audio.
Okay, okay, so...
Was the reward thirty thousand dollars before?
Yeah. Is it a year's back fifteen? I'm just gonna file another one.
Okay, it was just a bonus.
If we will put something out.
There it is. Okay, good, so all we have to do is move it tomorrow.
So that, I have to move that to...
Yep, so if you want to, oops, make yourself a little note in the editor's note, that that needs to be moved down with item, and whatever the number is, it'd be a big red flag this afternoon that we need to move it. And then you just can minimize that and let it just run.
Now, if I wanted to go back while I have time...
You need to do the motion and vote? Yep, perfect.
Am I still on it?
Mm-hmm.
Wait.
Yeah, click, there you go, click back on there, and then you can, now click the vote button. If you wanted to type notes with that item, exactly, make sure the one that you want to add them to is highlighted, and then you can type down in the bottom left-hand corner.
Did you need Michelle?
Yeah. Do you have, do you have a copy of that, of the letter from the city?
I probably do. Uh, I probably do.
It's only in town.
He's trying to get it.
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 Was that great?
Yeah, yes.
So, how did that, maybe it's up there?
Yes, true.
Oh, there.
I guess not.
What do you do?
Okay.
I think it's bad situation.
I'm in the back seat.
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 I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I'm in the back seat. I don't remember it's the-
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. We had a time slot that was perfect.
This is what-
The number six is what-
That's why I'm standing up. I'm glad to see that. Can you get mine? Sorry, give me five. Are you done?
I'll make your most important court.
Can you get mine? Sorry, give me five. Are you done?
I'll reflect. The board is back in session after having met with counsel. It's legal counsel concerning some legal issues raised during the hearing. And at this time, this matters before the board for further deliberation and proposed action. Entertaining the discussion, motion at this time for board members.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Sheeda.
Being from an agricultural background, being a farmer, I see any development in an agricultural area like this as a detriment to the neighbors that are farming. So, I have fundamentally, I look at this and state, well, I, what I feel is that we will impact negatively the surrounding agricultural properties. The problem we have here is it's also within the, in the Visalia development boundaries. So, it, this is a little more complicated than the normal move to a straight agricultural AE20, because it is somewhat covered by the future develop, of the city of Visalia. But when that, when the city does progress to that point, the development, whether it be across the street or adjacent, may be many years off. I just have a very difficult time for any development going into AE20 zones when the land used today is predominantly agriculture and will be in the foreseeable future. Right?
Mr. Chairman? May I make a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, a motion to deny the appeal and to grant tentative improvement, sending this back to the zoning administrator to address two items in the city of Visalia's letter, item number two, requiring curb and gutter to city standards, add that as a condition, and addressing number item eight, to change the wording on that to require connection when sewer is available to the site.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a clarithis? I heard the word tentative, but it was in the middle of the motion. Was it, this is a tentative decision?
Tentative decision, bring back in two week, do we have a meeting in two weeks?
Oh, I'm not sure. Is that Thanksgiving?
It'll do. Yeah, we'll still be there.
We, we are meeting on the seventh and the fourteenth, and not the 21st or 22nd.
Bring back on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
For the recommended findings.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Further discussion before we vote on the matter?
I, I just, I am probably going to vote to approve it, but I do share the same concerns that Mr. Sheeda does, and it's the clash of the rural and urban as our communities continue to grow. I struggle with the decision because I, I feel like it's inevitable as cities, the cities grow and move out, and yet, there's a part of me that, you know, feels as supervisor Sheeda does, the same way about the, you know, the agricultural impact, and we do worry about that a lot. But I, with the, the movement of the cities, which is not under our purview, I don't, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, except continue to remind folks that ag is an important resource to us. We need to be cognizant of that at every turn.
Well, I, I would just like to say that I, I understand and share Mr. Sheeda's concern. However, one of the things I learned in law school was that all real property is unique. And that is, when you're sitting in a piece of land, there is no other property besides the place you're sitting that, that will be the same as this piece of property. And this property is unique, too, in respect to agricultural use. This is an undersized parcel with six-point-something acres, a D mode zoned ag AE20. It is very close to the city limits of Visalia and within their urban development boundary, I believe, if I get the right boundary designation there. This is another situation where oftentimes, when we find ourselves in a situation where use is being proposed outside city limits, the cities are the ones who are opposing it. In this case, the city of Visalia is not opposing it. They're actually supportive with conditions that we're, that we're proposing here that I think that would be, for the most part, met. I also want to say, I appreciate in the design of this facility, the design to minimize the impact agricultural properties around it. The idea of keeping the walnut grove in operation around the parcel and placing this particular item in a location which is to minimize the impact on a, on around, surrounding ag property, which I believe is going to be, as we look down the road of, of mixed uses in our land, this is going to become kind of the, I would think, be sort of the, the norm of way of managing it, that would be to be sure that we put parking lots and situations or provide hedgerows and, and separation barriers between other parcels, so as to minimize the impact on adjoining agricultural property. So, I, I, I do not see this particular project as one which is going to impact agricultural pursuits around it because of its design. And, and for those, for those reasons, I will be supportive of this as well. Of the motion. Comments?
Typically, what will happen if this was proposed today, within five years, we'll be looking at some other type of development. And it could be homes, it could be low-cost homes, low-cost housing. It could be houses with a lot of children, dogs, and what have you, that would impact agriculture as well. I think we take each one as it comes. My choice would be a church over that kind of existence. But each board member in the past, present, and probably in the future, will be concerned about agricultural uses. But with the population growth that we have and the expansions of cities, our staff and boards in the future will deal with the same issue time and time again. This case here, not an easy decision, but I, I will support, I will oppose the appeal.
No further comments. So, motions have been made. Please cast your votes. Vote is four to one in support of the motion, which was to deny the appeal, bring this back in two weeks with findings, and to have the matter go back to the zoning administrator with those requested changes. That brings us to item number 26, which is to accept the strategic business plan quarterly report for July, September, 2006. And I'm supposed to present it by the CEO's office, and I see Kristen Bennett down there.
Good morning, Kristen Bennett County Administrative Office. It's my pleasure to present the first quarterly report for the strategic business plan. While it's only been a month since you adopted the plan, we wanted to keep to the reporting schedule, and therefore, let's start reporting at this time. Since the adoption, we've been very busy. The rollout of the plan is underway. Departments are working to disseminate the information to every employee. Our goal is that every employee would receive an overview of the plan from their immediate supervisor and a copy of the plan with their name on it. The strategic initiatives have been printed on plotter paper, and departments are posting these, and you've now got one in your chambers, compliments of Human Services Functional Group. The full plan and introductory video are available on the county website, and the video is being shown at the new employee orientations. And last week, Supervisor Sheeda presented the plan and the video to sixteen, over 1,600 employees at the end service day for Health and Human Services. We've also been implementing the plan. The four functional groups, Safety and Security, Health and Human Services, Resource Management, and Community Services, and the Finance and General Government Groups have each met and held their first quarterly meeting. The meetings are an opportunity for the groups to discuss common issues and set some goals that they're going to work toward as a group. Additionally, departments are beginning the process of developing department operational plans, which will ultimately feed into your county operational plan or the budget, and these incorporate the department goals, accomplishments, and budget requirements. For the next quarterly report, which will be presented to you in January, we're proposing a joint session with your board and all of the department heads to discuss the progress at that time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, members? Seeing and hearing none?
Thank you.
Need a motion to accept the report?
Affirmative.
Second.
Motion is second. No further discussion, please cast your votes. Motion is unanimous to accept the, the report. Brings us to public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter this morning on items which are not on today's agenda but are within our jurisdiction are invited to come forward. Give, again, we're being recorded, so please give, please give us your name and address, and the public comment period is now open. Welcome back.
We're back. Again, my name is Francisco Martinez. I have with me 220 signatures and a petition from my community. Yes. From Plainview. And they are very concerned because of the lack of the sewer system in our community.
Would you like to leave the petition with our, our clerk?
Yes, please. And I want to thank you, one of you, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for our community. Thank you for your help. We're organizing ourselves in the community in Plainview to work with you. And so, we want you to work with us, too, so that we can better our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
We want to ask this day-
Oh, please, first, may I have your name and your address?
My name is Josefina Flores.
Josefina Flores.
Venimos del area de Plainview.
Uh, we come from the area of Plainview.
You have an address for us?
19-
Nineteen.
520.
Five twenty.
Alder Row.
How?
Alder Row.
Plainview. Plainview, thank you.
We want to ask a request- That the speed be reduced in these areas. We've had quite a few accidents in this area. My family has been personally impacted. Ah, here, ha muerto una niña de dos años. Allí ha muerto una niña de dos años.
There has been a child, a two-year-old child who died.
Por la alta velocidad.
Because of the high speed.
Mi suegro.
My father-in-law.
Como de 72 años.
Who was 72 years old.
Fue atropellado también por la alta velocidad.
Was also run over because of the high speed there.
Y estamos pidiendo que se han cambiado las velocidades en esta área.
And we're asking for your help to reduce the speeds in this area.
Gracias.
Thank you.
You might explain to her and others that, because we, we can accept your public comment, but we cannot, we're not required, we're not allowed by law to respond because it's not on our agenda today. So we can, we can receive your comments, but we aren't able to respond as far as particular action.
Pero por causa de que no estaba en la agenda hoy, no podemos ahorita contestar para atrás.
But our staff is here today, and they are hearing your comments, and it will, it may lead to further board action.
Entonces ahorita el momento, el personal de ellos está escuchando, tomando en cuenta todo, y luego entonces esto puede seguir a otra acción después. Okay?
Mr. Maples would like to make a comment.
Chairman, it might be appropriate to indicate to them they might want to connect the highway patrol.
La mejor sería también de conectar con el, la patrulla de caminos. Okay. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenos morning. Mi nombre es Domitila Lemos.
My name is Domitila Lemos.
Y quiero pedir, por favor, también que nos incluyan en el plan general, y gracias por cada uno de ustedes otra vez, porque sin ustedes nada es posible para nosotros. Yo quiero pedir que, por favor, si hay algunos rancheros aquí, que, por favor, ellos puedan, y si digo algo que los pueda ofender, les pido perdón, que, por favor, ellos vean los pesticidas que se están echando en los campos, porque pensamos que solamente afecta a los trabajadores, pero no. Nos afecta a todos en general. Y, por favor, yo quiero que tomen en cuenta eso, y luego, este, en las escuelas, nosotros estamos rodeados todos de, de huertas en las escuelas donde están nuestros niños, y por lo que hemos sabido, esto les afecta para el aprendizaje, su mente, y muchas cosas. Y una vez yo que trabajaba, estaba.
You might want to wish, let your interpreter.
My name is Domitila Lemos, and I just wanted to request that we also be, make sure that we're included and allowed to participate in the Tulare County General Plan. And the next comment is that I want to, and I don't know if any growers are here, but I, if I offend you, that is not my intention. But I do want to talk about the pesticides, and one of the things that happens is that pesticides affect, or it's always thought that it just affects our workers, but in reality, it affects us, all of us. And we're surrounded, or our schools there in Plenview are surrounded by the grows that are, that are, that are sprayed, and of course, this does have an impact in our children in the education and, and learning of, the kids' learning in school.
Quiero agregar, por favor, que si los rancheros pueden hacer algo en esto, para que ayuden avisando a las escuelas cuando se va a sprayar, o sprayar un viernes por la tarde, para que así el sábado y el domingo un poquito baje, un poquito el pesticida, para que el lunes nuestros niños no sean tan afectados por eso. Y, por favor, les pido eso, porque todos somos afectados con los pesticidas. Que hagan un poquito de conciencia de los rancheros de lo que, qué es lo que están echando en sus campos, por favor. Gracias.
And the other thing is I wanted to, to request, and see if maybe perhaps the growers could do this, is that if they are going to spray, to notify the schools of the spray, or if perhaps they can spray on a Friday or Saturday or Sunday, so that way they could have the pesticide levels go down by the time the, the children return back to school, and, and so not to affect the children. I'm hoping that we can somehow, you know, with their conscience, take this into account, and I want to thank you all. Thank you. Gracias.
Morning.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Valeria Garcia.
My name is Valeria Garcia.
Y yo vengo a hablarles de que, por favor, nos pudieran poner luz en el pueblito de Plenview, porque no tenemos luz, está muy oscuro. Y por eso, pues allá se vive la gente que anda en las maldades, porque está muy oscuro, no hay luces. Nos eso, eso, por favor, le pedíamos a ustedes que nos hicieran, por favor, de poner luces en todas las calles de Plenview.
I wanted to talk about the lighting in Plenview. It is really dark in, in our area. There's no lights, and so we end up with a lot of people doing things that perhaps they shouldn't be doing, doing bad things. And so we are in need of lighting, in dire need of, of lighting, and that's what I'm requesting.
Thank you. We also need your address for our record.
Cuál es su domicilio? Es 19.
Nineteen.
707.
Seven oh seven.
Avenida 196.
Avenue 196 in Plenview.
In Plenview.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Yo soy Valle Esperanza.
Valle Esperanza.
Vengo de Plenview.
I come from Plenview.
Do you have an address for us, ma'am?
Ape.
Su domicilio?
No lo sé, ahorita me voy.
I can't think of it right now. It's in my memory.
Y venimos también con, con, que nos hicieran el favor de arreglarnos las calles, ya que cuando llueve son muchos charcos, y quedan allí por muchos días, y también eso, hay, hay moscos, hay miros que, que afectan a los niños. Entonces, con todo este favor, es todo estos que venimos diciendo, y agradecerles por lo que nos, nos ayuden, verdad, que las calles están en pésimas condiciones, o sea, no hay calle, está muy charcos, puro lodo, eh.
And, and what I'm requesting is, of course, on the streets, we have so many holes, every time it rains, we have these, these potholes, and then we end up with water that stays there, then creating the mosquitoes, which then affects our children, which becomes a health problem. But at the same time, I also want to acknowledge, and we want to appreciate for everything that you are doing for our community. But that's the request that I'm asking is about taking care of the street.
Gracias. Gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
I'm trying to speak English.
Thank you.
So my name is Irma Royo. I'm in Lencey, 1043 Silingard Drive in Lencey, California. But I'm work for La Unión del Pueblo entero. I'm community organizer. And at this time, I come to talk about, my understanding is 15 communities is not included in the, in the general plan. So we work with the, organizing these communities, and you see the petition of all these friends, that is a priority for this, especially, a specific town, Plenview. But we include 220 petitions, and that petition we, talking, we are request for another services and another necessity that, that these towns have. So I appreciate your time for listening, and we request, I, I ask for you include these communities in the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address during public comment period?
Then I will.
Very good.
My name is Lupe Martinez, and I'm, the address is 1302 Suite 4, from Delano, California. And I also am a community organizer, and these are one of the things that we're seeing in, in these communities, as in Plenview, Tulaville, Tulaville, and its communities, the lack of, of services that they, or that they lack at this time. And I heard a while ago from you, Mr. Chairman, that the need of, of educating the communities also in order to be able to help them. And what I'm doing is, Lupe Martinez, with center on race, empowerment, and environment, is offering to you our services, our help to help educate those communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing here no one else, we will close the public comment period, and. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Good morning, again. My name is Bob Fatika. My address is 15136 Lipson Avenue in Visalia. I was here several weeks ago on an issue, and I'm back, hopefully for the last time, regarding this issue and bothering this board. And once again, I want to state very clearly that, and especially in light of the fact that I've been here for a couple of hours and see the major things that you deal with all the time, I respect the board, I respect each and every one of you. I mean it sincerely. Unfortunately, I'm here, and I noticed there's an individual here, and I apologize to her, but I'm here only to talk about the law, if you will, and my concern for that. I heard comments in the last couple of hours regarding David versus Goliath, state mandates, legislative, the legislature dictates state statutes, and the board must follow statutes. And, and I feel less guilty being here by hearing those comments and being kind of spurred on by a variety of people over the last several months. Bottom line is, today there was an editorial in Visalia paper, and I just want to read one comment from it, and it says that Judge Lloyd Hicks, regarding a ruling of one of our elections here, ruled that the qualifications the elections office published weren't applicable for reasons relating to the way the combined auditor treasure office was established, and therefore the only qualifications was age and voter registration. And here's my concern. It says here that, that only the basic qualifications applied slipped past the Board of Supervisors, the county council's office, and the elections office. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just reading what was said. However, taking that ruling and the slippage at the state legislature, I have a concern and a question, and hopefully it would be addressed at another session, as you had recently said, Mr. Chairman. I believe, in my understanding, is that the California statute, 24,304.2, that consolidates the specific four offices or two super offices, was, was signed into law and approved by the governor, or signed by the governor on September the 29th of 2005. It stated that Tulare County and Sonoma County can consolidate those offices by ordinance. It wasn't an urgency matter, and it appears subsequent to that passage of law that Tulare County has not passed that ordinance in Tulare County, validating, if you will, Government Code Section 24,304.2. On August 16th of '05, this board approved the Government Code Section 24,300.5, which was the only law that possibly applied to this consolidation, but in fact was ruled not applicable. And therefore, on September 29th, Government Code Section 24,304.2 came into place for only Sonoma County and Tulare County. And I would respectfully, very respectfully, but very importantly, seriously, very importantly, ask the board to consider whether they did, in fact, after the passage of the proper law, did they, did you by ordinance pass in Tulare County and approve the consolidation. Thank you again, and hopefully this will be the last time I have to bother you. I am sorry, sincerely, but I'm stuck.
That's why it's called public comment.
Thank you again.
For coming. All right. Anyone else wishing to address this this morning? If not, we'll close the public comment period, bring this matter then back for Board of Supervisor Matters, and we'll begin with Mr. Maples.
Well, it was a busy week, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday AM, we had the Heart and Pro Youth Breakfast Report. It was an outstanding report. On noon of the same day, EDC, Economic Development Corporation, of which we are a highly paid member, had their report. On Saturday, we honored former supervisor, Mr. Don Hillman, and our representative supervisor Conway spoke very well. Monday, we had the Edison Ag Tech, the 10-year celebration for that facility, which is adjacent to our ag facility, which is the facility itself. So it's been a very busy week, and all the supervisors attended, just to review for my own benefit. Outstanding week for these different organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Maples. Mr. Ashida?
Friday, I had the pleasure to travel to Hollywood and go to the Latino Institute Annual Banquet, and it was quite informative, and it was also a very good place to meet a lot of the Latino Assemblyman Senators, so I enjoyed it. To the last comment about regular, about qualifications to be a candidate. We just saw recently where Jerry Brown did not fit the qualifications for belonging to the bar for five years prior to running for office, and that was thrown out of court. So Mr. Brown is still a candidate for Attorney General. So this issue goes way beyond what we face in Tulare County. I think the, the last thing I want to say is from the group from Plenview, I'm sorry they've left already. Groups can request a lot of things for government to do, like lighting, like sewers, like even water. But what it really takes is the commitment of the community to carry those, those goals forward. This will probably be the third water board in Plenview that I've worked with in the last three years, that we've had the ability to carry the project all the way through to where it looks like we're going to accomplish it. But what I'm really trying to say is it takes community action and synergism to keep a project moving forward to where we can attain someday the lighting and the sewer and the water for these communities. I just want to reemphasize that. Thank you.
That and a little De Niro, and we're good to go.
Landscape and Lighting District works very well.
Rural Lighting, U.S.
Tomorrow morning, I will rise at 2:30 and drive my son to the airport, who leaves for his mission service in Boston, Massachusetts, and he, his plane, I believe, takes off at 4:30 in the morning. So we had a farewell dinner for him Sunday evening and went very well, but he's excited about leaving for his missionary service, and we're, we're excited for him, so we'll be less one son for two years.
Very good. Well, it's a bittersweet situation, I'm sure.
It is.
It's cold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
More sweet. Only you could say that.
That were not, that was not part of my remarks. That was just a box that said that. Last Wednesday, the California Partnership started a couple days' worth of meetings, our actual final meetings in the form as we exist currently, as the executive order is ready to expire. The governor was there with us on Wednesday, and his attendance was much appreciated. Going forward, we hope to merge the federal task force that Ms. Hertzner referred to this morning and the California Partnership. The governor would like us to work together. It's the topic of much, much conversation within the state. How much we're actually able to accomplish, we feel positive about. We have some deliverables, we believe, already, but going forward will be the most important part, and of course, it requires the cooperation of, of all involved. And the only other thing I have to report is, on Friday, when I finished the partnership meeting, I drove to Merced and met with Supervisor Pedrosa and two other committee members from the San Joaquin Valley Rail Committee to have a very preliminary conversation with Representative from United Pacific, keep calling it United Pacific, that's an airline, UP Railroad. Thank you. Union Pacific, not United, I got to get that out of my mind. Union Pacific Railroad, as I say, very preliminary, in a couple of months, the principals will meet in Nebraska where they're headquartered, and he's going to introduce this idea of someday, sometime passenger rail between Merced and Bakersfield along the, the UP line. It's currently on the BNSF in the guise of Amtrak. So I don't look for this anytime soon, possibly as soon as high-speed rail, but at least conversation, you know, was had and started, and one of the interesting items. and he's going to introduce this idea of someday, sometime passenger rail between Merced and Bakersfield along the UP line. It's currently on the BNSF in the guise of Amtrak, so I don't look for this anytime soon, possibly as soon as high-speed rail, but at least conversation, you know, was had and started. And one of the interesting items, one of their biggest hurdles for them to get over, as they explained, is they mainly haul freight. Once you put bodies on there, your liability is extended tremendously, and it would not be possible to do it unless there's some extension of the track. There's double tracking in some areas along the route, but in other areas, where it's passed through cities and communities, the rights to that, you know, they've sold off the easement, and so that will also create a difficulty should we ever get to the point where we want to be. So it's one of those, it just made me stop and think after spending time with the partnership, how important future planning is, and how important it is that we pay attention. As you've often said, if we pave over a naturally occurring aquifer, you know, we don't get it back. And so certainly these easements could be repurchased, but I can only imagine what that would cost. So future planning is very important, and I think all of us in the San Joaquin Valley are really at a crossroads where we really need to make some tough decisions about where we're going and what we're doing.
I thought, when you mentioned that to me, I believe yesterday, about the issue of liability, I thought of what, you know, indemnification requirements might be required. In other words, if you're going to entice the railroad to bring back that passenger service, then the communities that benefit may have to step up and say, we're willing to take on some sort of liability ourselves in order to encourage that sort of action. Because I could see where the railroad would be very reluctant to get back into something which is probably marginally profitable and potentially, and potentially hugely liable for them. What would be their incentive for doing so? So, you know, indemnification strikes me as being one of those things that might be helpful. On a good note, I did see an email from our RMA director that we were successful with our one point four million dollar grant application for Moonee's Grove, the park improvements there. That'll be much, do a lot to benefit to that park.
I did forget to mention you, and we all know that we're going to our second session this year for the San Joaquin Valley Regional Supervisors Association, and I'm looking forward to those meetings. The agenda looks informative, but also at that time, the torch will pass to Tulare County, and we will be the hosts next year, so.
We'll get her done.
Hope so.
Just one last thing, I was, and I guess it struck me as we were talking about our general plan, not, I'm sorry, our strategic business plan. As I sit on the State Commission on State Mandates, one of the issues that presents itself occasionally is, you'll have a mandate from the state of California that will impose, for instance, service, particular training requirements of police officers. However, if you are, if it's discretionary for you to have a police department, such as a school system, then the fact that they mandate this, you didn't have to have a school, you didn't have to have a police department, so you are not therefore entitled to any kind of reimbursement from the state of California. And as I was thinking about Mr. Davis's comments about, we have the mandates, and then sometimes the desire is to go, as funds allow, to go beyond that. What more can we do for people in our county? Something for us to keep in mind is, are these issues of mandates. If we tackle something which is not required of us, and the state mandates certain training, whatever it might be, which increases the cost of it, there's no means of getting reimbursement for that. So something for us to keep in mind as we do our strategic planning, that we keep that thought in mind, that we don't put ourselves in a position where we would end up with surprises, so. If there's nothing more, counsel, we have need for closed session, I believe, yet this morning?
Excuse me, we do, Mr. Chairman. Items A and B are off agenda, items C, D, and E are on your board's closed session agenda, and I do not anticipate any.
Very good, then we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you all for being in attendance here today.